I will call this meeting to order at 5:07 PM. The first item on our agenda tonight is a workshop on budget focused on the resources priority. I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, President Chapa, board members. Thank you, everybody. Hopefully, you can continue eating while we're working tonight. We, I wanted to make sure that we spent a real quick minute introducing who is in the room this evening because I know some people may not have remembered who's who in here tonight. So where do you start with Dr. Hill? Just go around the room and introduce yourselves so everybody knows who's who and then we'll get started by turning it over to Darla.
Dr. Michael Hill, Chief Operational Officer. David Lewis, Food Services.
Amy Foster. Martha Richardson, Trustee.
Jessica Johnson.
Mary Margaret, Assistant Lieutenant.
Mary Margaret, Trustee.
Mary Margaret, Assistant Superintendent of Social Services.
Sarah Monroe, Trustee.
Barry Fox, Executive Director, Teaching and Learning.
Matt Smith, Superintendent.
Natalie Lopez, Assistant Superintendent of Research and Equity.
Paulers Johnson, Executive Director, Media Research.
David Wilwachs, Trustee.
Steven Wors, Chief Academic Officer.
Melanie Fowler, Trustee.
Bianan Means, Trustee.
Sheena Joshua, Director of Budget and Finance.
Nancy Lee, Department of General Counsel.
Dana Cox.
Excellent. Thank you all for being here and engaging in this work. As you noticed, when we do workshops, we will, for the most part, try and make sure that we're aligning them with the priorities that you adopted. This priority on resources is an important one for us to figure out how we maximize resources, the stage in your priorities. So Darla's going to start to take us through a process tonight and get us into the budget monitoring season.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, President Chapa, trustees, and staff. Thank you all for being here tonight. I'm hoping that we can have a little fun tonight. For me, it's going to be a participatory budget workshop. As you can see, I'm seated at the table and I will participate with the group as well. You have it set a little differently. At each of your tables, you have a note taker. If you are a note taker, please just show hands. So the note takers are connected to the screens in front of you. Eric, we hope to get some input from the board on the budget for fiscal year 25 and 2026 as well as starting to build that. We'll have three or four table exercises where one of the tables will report out. You'll notice that it's not around your table and we'll call on a table to report out at the end. And we hope everybody can just participate and just have a little fun as we go through the process. I kind of wanted us to start to look back at, in June, we had a budget workshop that talked about the budget development process and we were focusing on fiscal year 2025. So we got that budget adopted. If you'll see step seven, the final budget was approved in June and now we have to, we implemented it July 1st. The staff is able to start this begin on July 1st. But there's a monitoring process that goes along with the budget process as well. So I wanted us to take, just start off by visiting at your tables, maybe about five minutes. You have a staff member from some department in the district with you and talk about what the board's monitoring process should look like. The staff can give you input on what their budget monitoring process looks like as well. But we're focusing on fiscal year 2025 and go through 2026 later on. We'll take about five minutes just to discuss the budget monitoring process for fiscal year 2025.
So we have Joe Hogg, one of the food services.
First thing I'm looking at is when it comes to the area, it should be on the first quarter. I know. We also, we're sure. We're just. We have to. We are. Yeah. Carlos, I feel like giving up. It's like, no. Sorry. That's right. But you're like, certainly. Huge part of my work. I think the board. And huge document. Everybody. What's interesting though is this is not a, this is probably a, maybe it's a, maybe it's a. Maybe you have to show. Because I do like to see. This is a year. Actually. You've got this unexpected. So we, there's something that's like ours, you know, and we're kind of other. Yeah. They would, they would. Yeah. 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 Basically, like we all adopted that we. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget actually, I think for me, we decided that we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true. But I don't think you could use the idea of like all the, the budget. And sometimes we try to go in. The budget, the acting hours, I think for me, we designed that especially, but we didn't have a great one. But based on my, I understand we, one of the departments that have high degree of experience, but all the, that's true.
know what other data you want to see. I talked to Mr. Choppin, said, yeah, we can do it by teachers to students, we can do it by title to students, we can share what the FTEs are in, for instance, food services. I think we have another budget workshop coming up that's specifically geared to enrollment and staffing. So that's the kind of data that we can provide in a workshop like that.
And back when in financial futures, and I think we still get this, there's graphs showing historically how much our spend is in terms of how much we put towards the classroom, how much is in the central office. Those are, that's still good data from a board. So that helps us with the communities, we're talking about our budget and discussing this.
And that's also was shared at the functional level, where we have comparisons for how did the board budget at functional levels in '23 compared to '24, '24 compared to '25? Because you can look at that data and say instructions increased from '24 to '25 or decreased, or extracurricular did, and that's why provided the information on what all those functional levels need for the new work. Okay, we're gonna move on. Going around our timeline, I have one fun activity that I really want us to do. So let's talk about where we are right now. That's the next section that we'll look at. So in June, of course, when we recorded out the budget, we talked about addressing the budget gap in '24, '25, that's some of the work we're doing tonight. And some things that we're doing is a short bar. We have an FSC meeting coming up at the end of this month. We've been looking into a staffing study to benchmark with peers, looking at a strategic plan, and expanding the use of zero-based budget. We've already been doing that as far as departments, but we're looking at how we can expand that as well. So we're not gonna do table talk on '24, '25. If you'll look at your packet or what I sent you was a toolkit at the very back to share some budget strategies that the cabinet has been working on. So I'd ask for you to review that and look at it, but just as far as time constraints tonight, we'll get your input on that at a later date.
Darla, can I add a couple of things real quick?
Absolutely.
So just short-term items up there, just so the board knows, we're pursuing that staffing study. We're obviously, you know, we're pursuing refining the strategic plan and definitely is a cabinet all talking about that zero-based budgeting and how we continue to thoughtfully use our budget to promote the priorities that the board has adopted. So I just want to point out real quickly, we're working on things to get there, we're making progress on that. Regarding FFC, we want to get to a point where we have something tangible for FFC to actually do in the FFC meetings, instead of just throwing a problem out for them to solve without any real effort and means for them to solve it. So that'll be coming a little bit later in the FFC process this year, but we're gonna make sure that they have a meaningful voice in this. But we also want to do that thoughtfully. You know, as you talk about reducing budgets, you can get into some really tricky conversations when you do that with public groups, and we want to be careful about doing that and possibly repeating past things, so we want to be careful on it. But just know, we're pushing on these things and I feel good about progress.
And so the next step is we start to look at fiscal year 2026. We talked about where we are, we know we have a deficit, we know we have a budget gap, but then we need to start to plan on fiscal year 2026 and where would we like to go? So I kind of asked that question in your toolkit as well, and I've shared some questions with you here, but we're focusing on being student-centered. When we build a budget, let's start with the students as our focus and build a budget from there. And also, we want to make sure that when we build a budget, we're data informed. So that's why I'm trying to hit for the board tonight, what information do you need as we go through the process of tying in your priorities with the student needs? So on the priorities, let's take about five minutes, I guess, to say, what are your thoughts on student-centered? What data do you need to make those decisions to where we can actually pull it all together? How about we take three minutes on this one?
Sounds good.
I'll have time for the activities.
We got an idea. They aren't ready to work on it, but they're, they're, they're.
Dollars to the eight-earlens.
We're gonna have to record out for this one before we move to the next section.
We talked about a lot of different things. We talked about a lot of components in this. We tried to get into some of the narrative too on those takeaways. Some questions that we had was that yellow line, right, the FTEs going up pretty sharply in '24, '25. We thought that was interesting. You can take into account ESR transitioning to some full-time equivalents. We wondered where that might, what that might be attributed to, so we talked about that piece. And then we looked at also efficiencies. And what we saw in the narrative was the idea of vacancies of being not widely monitored and not dissolving those positions if they're not being filled. And that being corrected has led to some savings. So we see a couple of different things that rose to the surface in our discussion around that.
Yeah, so on that specific point on the FTE chart, we spent quite a bit of time talking about that. And Darla was sharing some, I think, really good information for context, which is that that's the total FTE. It's total FTE and it's primarily driven by absorbing ESR folks back end, but she said not all those folks are on general budget. So some of those are title-funded positions. She said if we were to disaggregate that and actually look at like positions that be heavily staffed ratio, like teachers, she said there actually is sort of a proportionately downward trend depending on the difference in roles in the district. And so by looking at total FTE, it's not necessarily overstating it, like that's how many people we have, but that increase in folks is not all coming out of general budget.
We did talk about that. And for board members, if the data that you want to see, that's why we're here, let us know what other data you want to see. I talked to Mr. Choppin, said, yeah, we can do it by teachers to students, we can do it by title to students, we can share what the FTEs are in, for instance, food services. I think we have another budget workshop coming up that's specifically geared to enrollment and staffing. So that's the kind of data that we can provide in a workshop like that.
And back when in financial futures, and I think we still get this, there's graphs showing historically how much our spend is in terms of how much we put towards the classroom, how much is in the central office. Those are, that's still good data from a board. So that helps us with the communities, we're talking about our budget and discussing this.
And that's also was shared at the functional level, where we have comparisons for how did the board budget at functional levels in '23 compared to '24, '24 compared to '25? Because you can look at that data and say instructions increased from '24 to '25 or decreased, or extracurricular did, and that's why provided the information on what all those functional levels need for the new workshops. Okay, we're gonna move on. Going around our timeline, I have one fun activity that I really want us to do. So let's talk about where we are right now. That's the next section that we'll look at. So in June, of course, when we recorded out the budget, we talked about addressing the budget gap in '24, '25, that's some of the work we're doing tonight. And some things that we're doing is a short bar. We have an FSC meeting coming up at the end of this month. We've been looking into a staffing study to benchmark with peers, looking at a strategic plan, and expanding the use of zero-based budget. We've already been doing that as far as departments, but we're looking at how we can expand that as well. So we're not gonna do table talk on '24, '25. If you'll look at your packet or what I sent you was a toolkit at the very back to share some budget strategies that the cabinet has been working on. So I'd ask for you to review that and look at it, but just as far as time constraints tonight, we'll get your input on that at a later date.
Darla, can I add a couple of things real quick?
Absolutely.
So just short-term items up there, just so the board knows, we're pursuing that staffing study, we're obviously, you know, we're pursuing refining the strategic plan and definitely is a cabinet all talking about that zero-based budgeting and how we continue to thoughtfully use our budget to promote the priorities that the board has adopted. So I just want to point out real quickly, we're working on things to get there, we're making progress on that. Regarding FFC, we want to get to a point where we have something tangible for FFC to actually do in the FFC meetings, instead of just throwing a problem out for them to solve without any real effort and means for them to solve it. So that'll be coming a little bit later in the FFC process this year, but we're gonna make sure that they have a meaningful voice in this. But we also want to do that thoughtfully. You know, as you talk about reducing budgets, you can get into some really tricky conversations when you do that with public groups, and we want to be careful about doing that and possibly repeating past things, so we want to be careful on it. But just know, we're pushing on these things and I feel good about progress.
And so the next step is we start to look at fiscal year 2026. We talked about where we are, we know we have a deficit, we know we have a budget gap, but then we need to start to plan on fiscal year 2026 and where would we like to go? So I kind of asked that question in your toolkit as well, and I've shared some questions with you here, but we're focusing on being student-centered. When we build a budget, let's start with the students as our focus and build a budget from there. And also, we want to make sure that when we build a budget, we're data informed. So that's why I'm trying to hit for the board tonight, what information do you need as we go through the process of tying in your priorities with the student needs? So on the priorities, let's take about five minutes, I guess, to say, what are your thoughts on student-centered? What data do you need to make those decisions to where we can actually pull it all together? How about we take three minutes on this one?
Sounds good.
I'll have time for the activities.
We're gonna record out for us. We volunteered, Dirk.
Whenever to focus on being student-centered, the question, what data is needed to make the budget decisions, produce desired student outcomes? And so first of all, we need to know what they need and then the purpose is that we're trying to fulfill. And then kind of have clarity around that differentiated resource model for campuses with highest need, based on however you want to define that, but there are plenty out there where we could come up with kind of a weighted model with demographics, et cetera, the different variables for that to be established. And then tracking for implementation of whatever resources are being provided. We talked about the concept of the process measures along the way, instead of the lag measure at the end. Did we reach the outcome? It's like kind of just re-aim at tracking throughout.
I don't think table one has reported out, and then you'd like to add?
Yes, we were talking about like how aligning to that student-centered budget, how does that align with these priorities? So we need to understand what's in the priorities in terms of the resources needed, the assets needed, in order to make sure that they're aligned to the student.
So I think we have about nine minutes left. I had actually said we need about 10 minutes for this activity, but we can keep through the fast part. So if you'll take this and work together as a group, you have 10 tokens, and you'll look at a gray bucket on your table. And the goal here is for you to look at the priorities that are listed here, and then look at the needs that we've identified here. You can talk about what are the consequences if you don't fulfill the needs, but you only have 10 tokens, and each one of these needs, you have to spend some of the tokens off. So work together as a team. Basically, this is you putting your superstitious hat on, right? Everybody asking for this, this, that, the other. And now Gina, budget says this is how much revenue we have for this year, that's how much money you have, so decide as a group what you're gonna spend your money on.
Can we lobby the legislature for more?
Okay, I'll be the lobbyist.
To the answers, I think I heard that. You got a pocket full of tell you what's around there.
It's required.
What is it? I remember in this section, you can put in that. We had a class in September, you had to say, oh, you're gonna do it. So it's usually hard, but I don't know how it's been. There's a whole lot of ability of repelling. We're talking about one. We're gonna do 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 one. I just think there are parts of the area that are not, that are probably costly. I don't know about that. I would say, I do think reading that work on the academic side, somehow, I think you gotta have more than a lot of it. It's a cultural, it's a, it's a score. I would actually, I would, I probably would do the, yeah, I feel like if I had a priority that, I would really, I would probably, I was probably, you know, in the exact same spot. I have to think two percent maybe the other way. Three percent there? So we would say we only do three percent of the survey. Only one. Only one.
Carol was saying, no, I'm arguing. I'm arguing. Okay. Okay. So it's a mandate. We were his advisor, we were his advisor. 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 We were his advisor.
So I know you guys are still working on table one. I know that table two left the CFO some money for, for the deficit.
Wow.
It's the same as tables. But the answer is if you use your team, and they said, you gotta take two back.
What?
So look at what you did and remove two.
What? I literally have to process. I actually don't. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Okay. 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 Now, why are you so mad? Okay. I guess I still have my, your, your.
It's a long drive for a new job, right? It's a nice, 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 it's a